This conference will now be recorded.
Board of Commissioners reorganization meeting. Happy New Year to everyone. If you would all please rise for the pledge of allegiance. Thank you, everybody. Randy, if you would please read the virtual meeting rules.
Sure, no problem.
Thank you.
If you are participating via go-to meeting and you do have a question on an agenda topic, please wait to courtesy of the floor. The board president will ask the moderator to read any names and addresses listed in the chat. Your question will be read aloud for the board and public to hear.
Thank you. Our first order of business tonight, it's a very exciting evening. It's the installation of our new elected officials. At this time, I'd like to ask the Honorable Judge Marks to please come to the center and swear in our commissioners. Your right hand and put your left hand on the Bible. Please repeat after me. I, David M. Kennedy.
I, David M. Kennedy.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the United States of America.
Of America.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The ordinances of the township of South Whitehall.
The ordinances of the township of South Whitehall.
And that I will discharge the duties of commissioner.
And I will discharge the duties of commissioner.
In South Whitehall Township.
In South Whitehall Township.
Lehigh County.
Lehigh County.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I'd just like to make a couple of quick comments on behalf of Brad and Monica. I want to thank Judge Marks for coming this evening. It means a lot to the three of us that you're swearing us in. It's tremendous opportunity to have you here. I know you took time away from your family and we do appreciate that you're here for the next half hour or so. I started this venture about 11 months ago and it has been exciting. When I started, I had the, I always thought that I would come out a winner and obviously I did. I didn't go into this to lose the race. In the last 11 months through the primary and the general, I have met so many people, hundreds and hundreds of doors I've knocked on and my wife. There's so many people I want to thank and I know I'll miss people, but Jeff Kelly, the sitting commissioners, Mike Walk and Diane, John Shea and his wife, Dave Burke. Brad and his wife were out working. Monica and her husband were out working. So many people. Dave Burke is in the back who are out knocking on doors. And I want to thank the fire departments. They were helpful. Primarily though, I want to thank my wife who allowed me to do this. I spent 23 years at the Parkland School Board and then take another four years in South Whitehall Township. I have to be a little crazy, but I'm looking forward to the opportunity. I want to thank my son for coming up from Philadelphia and it's just been great. Just one individual I really want to thank in particular, and that's a young guy who put this whole thing together for me. In fact, even at the victory party, I couldn't even buy him a drink. That's how young he is. But I want to thank Jacob Roth, who's here tonight with his girlfriend. He's a Penn State student. He's got an internship in Washington DC starting tomorrow. Jacob, I want to thank you from the bottom of my heart for what you did. So I'm looking forward to serving South Whitehall Township community for the next four years. Thank you very much.
Next, we have Monica Hodges. Okay, there you go. Good answer. Ready? I, Monica Hodges. Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The Constitution. Pennsylvania.
The ordinances of the township of South Whitehall.
The ordinances of the township of South Whitehall.
And that I will discharge the duties.
And I will discharge the duties.
Of commissioner in South Whitehall Township.
Of commissioners in South Whitehall Township.
Lehigh County.
Lehigh County.
With fidelity.
With fidelity. I didn't bring this to the podium with me. In 1956, a father fled his beloved country to escape communism and oppression in search of his dream of freedom and democracy. And today, only one generation later, he would be so proud that his daughter is exemplifying that dream. Today, I stand humbly before you as your newly-elected commissioner. Thank you to my community for placing your trust in me. Thank you to those who supported, encouraged, and walked beside me. It is an honor to serve you and I will always work hard for you. I will always prioritize you and serve you with respect, humility, honesty, and gratitude. And it is an honor to serve with you and all of you. Thank you so much.
I, Brad Osborne.
I, Brad Osborne.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The ordinances of the township of South Whitehall.
The ordinances of the township of South Whitehall.
And that I will discharge the duties.
And I will discharge the duties.
Of commissioner in South Whitehall Township, Lehigh County.
Of commissioner in South Whitehall Township.
Lehigh County.
Lehigh County.
With fidelity.
With fidelity. Thank you very much. I would just like, first of all, to thank my wife for allowing me to do this. It's a sacrifice, really, all elected officials know. It's not just them, it's their family. I'd also like to thank everyone for their support, not only of me, but our sitting commissioners, Commissioner Hodges, Commissioner Kennedy in this current election, and in the past election, Commissioner Kelly and Commissioner Walk. All of us together will make you proud. We will make you happy that you placed your trust in us and we will do what you put us in office to do. Thank you.
I'm going to sign these and get out of your hair, but I just want to say, thank you very much for having me. I am a resident of South Whitehall, proud resident, and I appreciate all the commissioners for your time tonight. Thank you.
Thank you again, Judge Marks, for being here tonight and for the honor of swearing in our commissioners. We all appreciate your time. Thank you very much. At this time, Randy, would you do?
I think we're going to allow Attorney Zader to.
Just do a quick roll call that all commissioners are present.
Sure, we can do that. Commissioner Hodges. Commissioner Kennedy.
Here.
Commissioner Osborne.
Here.
Commissioner Walk.
Here.
And Commissioner Kelly.
Here. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, congratulations to our new commissioners. Welcome aboard. And as your first official action this evening, you'll have the opportunity to select the officers of this board for the next year. So at this time, I would ask the Board of Commissioners, is there a motion? Thank you, Judge. Is there a motion to nominate some person on this board to be President of the Board of Commissioners of South Whitehall Township?
Attorney Zader, I nominate Diane Kelly.
I have a nomination of Diane Kelly. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Commissioner Osborne. We'll take a vote. Commissioner Kelly, would you like to have a roll call vote or would you like to have a vote en masse?
A vote en masse, please.
I will now take a vote. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? None opposed. Motion passes five to zero. Commissioner Kelly, congratulations. With you now being appointed as President of the Board, I turn it back over to you for the appointment of the additional officers of this board.
Thank you very much, Attorney Zader. I want to just take a moment to thank my fellow commissioners for nominating me as your Board President. I am humbled by your confidence in me. We, as elected officials, must remember why we are here. Our duty is to represent each and every citizen, whether you voted for us or not. When making decisions, we must be mindful to do what is best for our entire community. When this board deliberates on township matters, we may not always agree, but we must be respectful in our debate. To the public, please hold us accountable as your representatives. We need to hear from you, whether it be constructive criticism or praise. I believe that our local government works best when our community is involved. So thank you all for being here and we look forward to working together to serve this great community. Thank you. At this time, I will ask if we have a motion of the board for the position of Vice President.
I nominate David Kennedy. Commissioner Kennedy.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Second.
The second on the floor. All in favor of David Kennedy as Vice President of this board, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, David Kennedy. You are the Vice President of the Board with a five to oh vote.
Thank you very much.
At this time, I will ask for a nomination for Assistant Township Secretary of the Board of Commissioners. Do I have a motion?
I nominate Monica Hodges.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Very good, thank you. Monica Hodges is nominated as Assistant Township Secretary. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None, for by five to oh vote. Monica Hodges is Assistant Township Secretary. At this time, we have on our agenda a resolution to reappoint the Treasurer.
Do you want me to?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Sure, no problem. So tonight, we have a reorganization topic in front of us for the reappointment of Treasurer, which is myself. I'm not sure, I should be the one explaining this, but considering the role I am in, this is the role of Township Treasurer, which I've been serving for the past few years, I am bonded for the required amount. So I'd respectfully ask the board to take action on this tonight.
Thank you. Is there any board discussion on this resolution to appoint, reappoint Randy Cope as Township Treasurer? Hearing none, is there any public comment? Is there anything in the chat? Nothing, thank you. I will call for a roll vote, please. All in favor of appointing, reappointing, excuse me, Randy Cope as Township Treasurer, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. And next on our agenda is a motion to extend professional service firms to serve at the pleasure of the Board of Commissioners for an unspecified contract term. Randy, would you please read that motion?
Sure, I'd be happy to. So tonight, again, motion to extend all professional service firms to serve at the pleasure of the Board for an unspecified contract term. If it's okay with the Board, I'd like to read all of these reappointments that I have here in front of us this evening. There are 16 of them, but I will read through them each, each and each one individually here. So the resolutions are each individual resolutions, but seeing that this is a consent agenda, the Board has elected to take one vote on all of them. If there is opposition to any one of these third parties, then it will be treated in a separate vote. So I'll start to read the list now. Township Solicitor, Joseph A. Zader II with Zader Law Offices. Alternate Township Solicitor, James L. Brockle with Brockland DeVito. Civil Service Commission Solicitor, Eckert Siemens. Pension Committee Solicitor, Eckert Siemens. Labor Council, Eckert Siemens. Additional Alternate Township Solicitor, Mark S. Capuccio. Building Code Appeals Board Solicitor, Lawrence B. Fox. Township Tax Appeal Hearing Officer, Lawrence B. Fox. Township Engineer, The Pitcock Company. Alternate Township Engineer, Keystone Consulting Engineers. Sewage Enforcement Officer, Keystone Consulting Engineers. Geotechnical Engineer, Hanover Engineering. Alternate Sewage Enforcement Officer, Hanover Engineering. Utility Engineer, Spot Stevens &amp; McCoy. Third Party Residential Inspector, Barry Isit &amp; Associates. And last but not least, Third Party Commercial Inspector, Keycodes Inspect and Agency.
Thank you, Randy. Is there any board discussion on this motion? Seeing none, is there any public comment on this motion? None, is there anything in the chat? Okay, seeing and hearing none. All those in favor of the motion to extend all professional service firms to serve at the pleasure of the Board of Commissioners for an unspecified contract term, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. That concludes the reorganization portion of our meeting. We will now move on to our township business portion of the meeting. Item 6A, we have a resolution, amending Resolution 2019-07 Designating Depositories for Township Funds. Scott, if you would please help us with that.
For sure. Good evening, Commissioners. What you have in front of you is a resolution that allows us to pay our bills and write checks to our employees and pay our vendors. This specific resolution is allowing check signers, which we have some listed in the resolution, and it allows just communication between the banks and the township. So it's something we go through every reorganization, every year we address this.
Very good, thank you very much, Scott. Are there any questions from the board on this resolution? Hearing none, is there any public comment? Dave, is there anything in the chat? Okay, with no comment, I'm going to call for a vote. All in favor of the resolution, amending Resolution 2019-07 Designating Depositories for Township Funds, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None, five to zero, motion carries. Thank you very much, Scott. Our next motion, 7A. Is a motion to proceed with solicitation of quotes from qualified firms to assist in recruitment regarding the vacant Township Manager position. Attorney Zader, would you please help us with this motion?
Based on prior coordination with the interim Township Manager, Randy Cope, I believe he's going to take that.
Sure. No problem. So this is something that has been a long time coming. We're respectfully asking tonight to start the process, selecting a qualified recruitment firm to assist the township in the recruitment of the vacant Township Manager position. The township has been through this process in the past. I've also done a great deal of research on similar scope of works from surrounding municipalities as well as municipalities outside of Commonwealth, just to get a good grasp on the details involved with those sorts of scope of work. So with the permission of the Board tonight and a favorable pass of this motion, we will start that process immediately and hopefully have something out the door here later this weekend of the week here, if not early next week. So we will be getting this out here shortly if this goes through here tonight and bring, you know, bringing that back to the Board to select firms through the interview process.
Very good, thank you very much, Randy. Are there any comments from the Board on this motion?
I just have a couple of comments. We've had some discussion. When the request for a call goes out, we're thinking of a deadline of January 28th that we get adequate time to respond. And I believe we've agreed, or we should agree tonight, that the interviews for the firm will be done publicly.
Very good, thank you. Any other comments from the Board? Are there any comments from the public? Anything in the chat? Nothing. Okay, seeing so, we'd look for a motion to proceed with the solicitation of quotes from qualified firms to assist in recruitment regarding the vacant Township Manager position.
I'll make a motion.
Motion on the floor, is there a second?
I'll second.
You're very good. All in favor of this motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero, thank you. And just a note, Randy, do thank you for your filling in as Township Manager interim. You've been very, very helpful to this Board and we appreciate working with you and look forward to you working with us in this process of selecting our new Township Manager.
There's a big smile under his mask.
Thank you very much for the kind words and it's been my pleasure.
Absolutely, thank you very much. Motion 7B, the motion to reopen the 22 budget, has been removed from the agenda. Moving on to correspondence, Section A is public notice for the 22 meeting schedule, which is up on the screen. We certainly could read all these dates. Randy, did you want to run through any of the highlights?
I'll just run through the Board of Commissioner ones here. No significant change, no changes at all. Quite honestly, the Board will continue to meet on the first and third Wednesday of every month at 7:00 PM. We've also reserved the second Wednesday of every month for VOC workshop meetings. Those workshop meetings take place at 6:00 PM and are only on an as-needed basis. Our Building Code and Appeals Board, the second and fourth Wednesday of every month as needed, those meetings start at 3:30 PM. Civil Service, 1:00 PM on the second Wednesday of every month. I don't know if you want me to go through all these individually. They are posted up on our website under the Events tab, so it's very easy to find there on our homepage, but if the Board would like, I can, I'll continue to read through them.
I think that's quite adequate, Randy. And yes, it's a good idea to always check our Township website. The meetings are posted for the public's knowledge. Thank you. Moving on to 8B, public notice, there will be a joint meeting of the South Whitehall Township Planning Commission and the Board of Commissioners for the purpose of the comprehensive plan workshop sessions beginning on Tuesday, January 11th, February 8th, and so on and so forth throughout the next six months. Thank you. And moving on to 8C. There will be a workshop of the Board of Commissioners next Wednesday, January the 12th at 6:00 PM, and the topic is ordinance review. Moving on to direction and discussion, we have nothing scheduled. Is there anything anyone on the Board would like to add at this time?
Yes. I'd like to congratulate our three new commissioners. Welcome. For me personally, after serving as two years as a citizen advocate and two years as a commissioner, it's remarkable to reach this milestone with four other commissioners who I personally endorsed to win their elections, that all being based on the fact that we have common values and common goals for the township. I have high expectations of what we'll be able to achieve and I hope that the public has the same expectations and that we're able to meet them.
Thank you, Commissioner Walk. Any other comments from the Board? Thank you. Moving on then to 10A, Wears Dam Status. Randy, do you have an update on that?
I do have a small update. As you know, or most of you would know, we did apply for a DCNR grant to support the rehabilitation of Wears Dam. We did receive notification last week that that grant was not awarded. So the project will continue to move forward under the direction of the Board here, but I thought it was beneficial for everybody to understand that the grant was not awarded by the state.
Very good, thank you. Are there any questions from the Board on this topic?
Do we know why, Randy?
They don't give a lot of detail. They, the letters we typically receive when a grant is not awarded is that there's many great projects throughout the state and there's only so much money to go around, so.
Typical Harrisburg. Thank you.
Are there any comments from the public on this matter? We do have a question in the chat. Okay, very good, thank you. On to number 12, courtesy of the floor. No, they were removed, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, number 11, the minutes have been removed. They will be at our next board meeting for approval. On to item number 12, courtesy of the floor. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to approach the Board? Please come forward, thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Ashley Laura, a liaison with the Western Lehigh Chamber. I want to say, good to see you again, Commissioner Kelly and Commissioner Walk, and welcome to our three new commissioners. I'm here with my coworker, one of our newest liaisons, in addition to myself and my boss, Jessica O'Donnell. We've added another team member.
My name is Hayden Rendy. It is nice to meet all of you. I started with the Chamber back in September and one of the first projects I got to work on was Fall Fest with the South Whitehall Township in partnership with Mike Cooker Board here. Really great event and we're excited to continue partnering with the township again this year for that event. Something else that we do in the community that we wanted to thank all of you for, and for those that are new, kind of let you know about it, is the welcome signs throughout the community. Those are fundraiser that we do for our grant scholarship, which benefits local nonprofits like Parkland Cares has been a previous recipient, as well as the Fire Department. So thank you for that partnership and that continued partnership in helping us with those signs. And then something else that we do to highlight the businesses in the community, the new businesses, is we host ribbon cuttings. We would love to see you all at future ribbon cutting, so we'll be sure to get you on those invites so that you're aware of when those happen. So, welcome to the new commissioners and it's nice to meet you all.
In addition to ribbon cuttings and Fall Fest, some other things that we've done in the past, we've worked with the township on some business grants. Really, our mission with the community is to connect business with community, businesses to businesses, and we were happy to help liaison with that project as well. We helped Police Department with National Night Out and gaining business sponsors for the event. Also, we're able to work with Lehigh County for rounds of business grants as well and pumping that information out to our local businesses. So our goal is much like yours in that we're here to serve the community, get information out to them, help give them exposure, bring foot traffic to their businesses, and we hope that we can work together with you all. Thank you for everything that you have done in the past, for supporting our organization, our initiatives. Thank you for all the time you dedicate to volunteering. Like someone had mentioned, it's not just your time, it's your family's time and there's a lot that goes into that. So thank you for everything you've done. Thank you as well. We hold our monthly board meetings here actually in the brand-new renovated building. We invite you to join us for the second Friday of the month and we'll be sure to send an email out afterwards so you have our contact information if you need anything. But we just wanted to come before you, introduce ourselves, make sure there's that relationship there, let you know that we're here to support the businesses in South Whitehall Township and be here as an advocate for them. and be here as an advocate for them and be here for anything you need. Are there any questions? All right, thank you for having us. And thanks to you all.
Thank you so much. Thank you both, Ashley and Hayden. I appreciate your work with the Township in the past, and we do look forward to working with you in the new year. Thank you very much. Are there any other, courtesy of the floor? Sure, come on forward. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. John Shea, 2911 Huckleberry Road, Allentown, Pennsylvania. Congratulations. As the citizen advocate, we work very hard, put you in a place of trust. We ask that you continue to be true to your values. We ask that you always be public-facing. We ask that you always be transparent. We ask that you keep us financially sound. We ask that you continue to be responsive to our community. Most of all, always listen to the voice of the people.
Thank you very much, Mr. Shea. Very wise words that we will all take to heart. Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to address the Board this evening? Sure, come on up. If you would please state your name and address.
My name is Daniel Spiegel. I live at 1314 Antler Court. Congratulations to the newly appointed members of the Board. I wish you and those who are continuing from before, success in your stewardship of the Township. And I, I thought about not coming tonight because I'm going to propose some work, and I know there's some element of celebration tonight. However, there is work to do. As a result of the recent application for redevelopment of the Parkview site at the northeast corner of the intersection of 22 and 309, it's become clear that the Township has a problem that must be resolved without regard for the sort of transformation that might occur on that site. The elephant in the room, this sort of Damocles, is the intersection of Ridge 31309. By the day, traffic is increasing, particularly from the west, as the new warehouses and the senior living place are coming online. It impacts the east side of the intersection as left turns to proceed south on 309 require a break in traffic from the west. These breaks are becoming less frequent as time goes on, particularly at peak times. We can only speculate what will be the result of the inevitable redevelopment of the Parkview site. While the allowable uses will not have the incredible impact the recently denied application would have had, pretty much any update will exacerbate the situation. It's already getting pretty bad. A failure to act will result in the eventuality that drastic measures will be forced upon the Township. Every day that this issue isn't addressed is a day closer to where it will have to be addressed. We currently have, to some extent, choices. If we don't act, the only choice will be the most drastic of possible measures referred to above, closing that intersection. That may ultimately turn out to be the only viable resolution, but any solution, whether retaining that intersection or not, will likely require land acquisition, and the sooner that occurs, the better chance we can control the costs. I rise tonight to ask the Board of Commissioners, you guys, to take the proactive approach necessary to avert the inevitable daily quagmire that wants to, if the issue of this intersection is not addressed. You didn't cause the problem. I said that before at the hearing. It's not your fault, but it's here. All right? You own it. You have to take ownership. That's the way it is. That's how grownups behave, and I know you're all grownups, and I'm thankful for that. Years of inattention to the need to apply vision to the future infrastructure needs of the Township and not just this intersection, we all know what's going on west of 309, is now coming to a reckoning. I ask that you do whatever is necessary to put an apparatus in place to address it. And as an addendum to my typed remarks, I'll tell you, thought about 309 going north and bypassing some stuff would probably be productive, you know? And since I'm up here and haranguing you a little bit, I do want to tell you, we've had many Township Managers over the past few years, you know? And he's a young guy. You know what I'm saying? All right? Happy New Year. Congratulations. I wish you success, and I'm happy to help in any way I can. Ta-ta.
Thank you very much for your comments, Mr. Spiegel. Is there anyone else for courtesy of the floor? Is there anyone in the chat?
Yes, we have Phil Armstrong, Lehigh County Executive, and he likes to, he just wants, has a few comments. He tries to get to every municipal meeting to keep a line of communication with the county. He wants to thank South Whitehall for their cooperation with us over Cedar Brook and our construction project in South Whitehall.
Very good. Thank you to Mr. Armstrong. We appreciate you becoming Executive. Thank you very much.
I'd like to recognize a member of our audience, and that is newly-elected Lehigh County Commissioner Ron Beitler, former Lower McCongee Board of Commissioners President. And I'd like to thank Ron during the first two years of being a Commissioner. Ron has served as a mentor for Commissioner Kelly and myself on all government affairs, but especially in the area of land preservation. And we're grateful for everything that you did to help us get oriented and be productive during our first two years. Thank you, Ron.
Thank you, Commissioner Wolk. I didn't even recognize you there. And congratulations. I know you were sworn in last night as a County Commissioner for part of our district, so thank you. We look forward to your representation of our citizens. If there are no other comments, I'll proceed to the next item, which are payment of invoices. Our invoices and purchasing requisitions have been reviewed by the Township Manager and the Director of Finance, who authorized that checks be issued to pay bills as tabbed related. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion.
Thank you. Is there a second? Second. Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Five to zero, the motion passes. Thank you. Executive session, I will announce, the Board will meet in executive session following this meeting to discuss legal matters. And at this point, I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. The meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much for attending, and Happy New Year to all.